Okay, I've got five o'clock. I'll call Hartford City Council meeting to order at this time on June 23rd, 2022, five o'clock. We'll have invocation. David, would you offer that for us, please?
Lord's power heads all the time. We just want to thank you today. We thank you for each and every one that pressed out today for our Hartford meeting, Lord. We thank you for the mayor. We thank you for the council meeting. And we thank you for the people of Hartford being in the meeting with us, Lord. And we asking you to just bring understanding and we get things settled in our wonderful town Hartford. In Jesus mighty name, we pray. Amen.
All right, I see we have several visitors tonight. I think you all are on the agenda down here later on, so we'll address your all's issue then. Other visitors, if you wish to speak, you can go ahead. You're about the parking, right? Okay, we've got that on the agenda too, so we'll give you a chance there. Jonathan, you got anything? You're visiting. All right. Okay, glad to have you.
Appreciate you coming.
We'll take a look at the minutes of the last meeting. I don't know if you had time to read them or not, but when you do, I'll accept the motion to adopt those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, for second.
Second.
Any discussion, any deletions, additions? All in favor, motion's carried. All right, we'll take. Tara's not here tonight. She's got COVID. And so we'll go into our financial reports, take a look at our balances, all the accounts and everything. If you have any questions, now be time to ask them. Other than that, if you, whenever you get ready, we'll take a motion to adopt those as well.
I'll make a motion to.
All right. Thank you, station.
I'll second.
All right, per real seconds. Any discussion, any questions?
On this street improvements, do we have, like the balance abouts, do we have any streets that we're trying to look at on maybe blacktopping or anything right now?
Not right now. No, we're waiting to see what less is going to cost once we get that construction done there and see.
Okay.
See what we've got left to do with other.
I thought the hospital was going to pay for less.
Uh-uh. No, we are.
I don't know why they did that. Are they paying for the difference in the tile sizes that they want for different?
I thought Tommy should ever be willing to retire this street.
Nothing's ever been mentioned about him.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Anything else? Anybody have? If not, entertain a motion once you feel comfortable.
You already had first and second on it.
Already that was a question discussion. It's been a long day for me.
It's all right.
Yeah.
Well, we can do it again if it's neatly.
Okay. All in favor, uplifted hand, motion's carried. We'd have an old business, so we'll open the floor for new business. The first issue is downtown parking. A council member asked if we bring it to the council and let the council decide about the downtown parking. This will be a time for you to make a presentation to the council.
I don't know if I consider downtown or not. I'm at twice as nice kind of about a business. I've had issues. I fell and broke my elbow. I've got pictures. I could pass it back to you. I tripped right from there about November of 2021. I tried to talk about getting something done. You can see in one of those pictures where the sidewalk has dropped below the hurt. And this blacktop is was what I got.
Yeah.
And it's in front of my door. It's not even where I tripped. So I feel, personally, I feel like that was a retaliation for asking. I mean, that's me personally. So, a couple of three months ago, I mentioned about how bad the parking is on the side of the building because someone is going to get hurt. I had a lot of people that did until the sign was put up in their side door because they cannot walk the distance. They have to walk to get to the shop. And they use cans and stuff, and they cannot navigate this. Do you hear that one? And the icing on cake was this sign that was put up facing the highway and not the parking spot. I don't know why this is going on and what it is with that building, but I'm trying not to be upset, but I am very upset. Where that sign was put, if no one knew that sign was there, when they pulled up in there to park, there's no doubt they would get that sign because it's facing them. Just works at me in that. And this is what, that's burning in my heart. That's how bad it is on that side.
Yeah.
And a lady called me last night. She said to let y'all know, and she comes over from Warrensville. She has reported to the ADA about the American disability, about how it's imperative that she has a place to park because she cannot get to the building. And I feel like personally that everything's been against me since the short time that I've been trying to plan this building. The parking's been gone. And now it's just like, well, the other, a couple of weeks ago, I was giving work and a message that Steve Wiggins wanted to talk to me about the parking. And I'm to, I know what we'd say I want to do. Yeah, I need parking.
That's a ongoing issue in the city limits right now, isn't it? I mean, that's a huge problem within the city.
They're taking all of my parking away. I mean, there's no.
And I get what you're saying, but that is one of the biggest needs in the city of parking.
Blacktop just like it was on my, this street over here.
So with Wiggins, you're saying, you want to get commercial parking.
Yeah, I want to go hit a car or something and. I can't be responsible for you that. But I understand parking is an issue.
It is. It's a major issue right here in town.
Completely.
Especially on 231.
Well, the thing of it is true. I understand that my ex-brother-in-law owns this property. His daughter and his son, who right now are at a family reunion, or they will be here, brought me the maps they got from the courthouse, which says that that's their property down to the highway may be encroaching on the property as it's shown on these aerial maps. Now, they have said they're planning, they will fix that sidewalk beside that building without any qualms. They're totally.
Yes, they're on that.
And they're willing to do that. But they also want that sign down because that's private property.
I think we put the sign up just to relieve the city of any kind of liability. I approached the highway department several years ago about putting in some diagonal parking there next to the street. They would not allow us to do that because it created a safety hazard because you can't see behind the way the road comes in. You can't see it. So that was one reason that the sign was put up was just to try to relieve the city of any liability if somebody did get hurt there or anything like that. So whether we.
Well, you know, people have been parking along that area since I was a kid.
But it was horse and wagon then.
No, it wasn't. Sparky. It was a lanes. People parked along there. There was also parking there on 69.
Before that.
But the majority of still parked right there. There never has been a wreck there until somebody rolled off the curb or left, and I don't know what it was. And if you look carefully at these aerial photographies, it's clear that Tommy owns the property where that sign is.
Right. Does anything he wants to, you know, but the city needs to be relieved of any liability. If they leave a sign there, they can do anything they want to. I don't care, you know? They can park wherever they want. It bothers me a bit, but we have to have some kind of relief from liability of somebody getting hurt there.
Well, then you're going to do the same to everyone who's on a corner in downtown Hartford.
That's the only one that I know was causing any problems.
This was not causing any problems.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. They can do anything they want to. If they want to, if they want to pave that and let people park up there, that's their, that's their prerogative. I don't care.
It's not the parking that's the problem. It's the people walking on all that stuff that's broken up.
Yeah.
So therefore, I don't see where the sign was in the area.
We will, Tommy will fix it. Tommy and Dara will fix it. She says.
Yes, she has.
Okay.
So if that's Mr. Bennett's property, would he be the one that's liable for accidents in Hartford?
Well, we just have to make sure that the city's not drawn into it as well.
Well, I think that's already been told to one person, has it not?
I don't know.
Is nobody drove off that curb and threatened to sue the city? That's what Tara told me.
There was a lady that pulled up there and scraped the bottom of her bumper and
Yeah.
wanted us to fix it and.
Yeah. That's the only one that I know of that's ever had a problem on that corner.
People had to cross the highway the way they do with, from across.
Just tell them, go ahead and fix all the sidewalk they want to and just make it wind up for people to park up there and do whatever they want to. But the city has to just maintain, you know, some kind of a safety factor where we're not going to be sued if somebody does get injured there. But they can do anything they want to.
Are you going to do it for all of the corner businesses in downtown Hartford? Are you going to require the same thing from them?
For what?
For any liability of anybody getting hurt on that corner.
I think if everything's clearly marked downtown, you know, what you, where you can park and where you can't park, I don't know what you're looking for. You, as far as I'm concerned, they can go ahead and do whatever they want to down there, you know? Just put in all the sidewalk they want to. The problem, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to protect the city is all I'm trying to do.
So would, would it be more beneficial if there were signs up that says this property belongs to Tom Bennett?
I don't think so.
No. It's like any other corner in this, this town. That's what I'm saying. If he wants something in writing regarding liability from Tom and/or his heirs or Dara and Joey, who happened to be his power of attorney, then you need to get it from everybody who owns property on the corner and Main Street downtown.
Well, would that not be the cities? I mean, we fixed the sidewalks. Do those belong to the cities? But I guess I'm asking, would there be a liability? Somebody fell in front of his.
I can answer that without a lawyer here, and you know that. But I am saying, in all fairness, you can't require one without requiring every corner property to do the same thing.
Well, I don't think that anybody else on the corner is claiming that the sidewalks are theirs, you know? I think you're looking at two different situations.
Then if the sidewalks, then why didn't you put the sign there? I mean, that's, that's what got me.
Just to relieve the city of liability in case somebody parked up there and then pulled out the street and hit somebody else.
I wouldn't worry about the parking as much as people falling on all the broken up stuff. That's what got me.
And, you know, once somebody parks up there, then the sidewalk, there's no room to walk or anything like that. It's, that's their decision. If they want to do that, if that's their property and they want to fix the sidewalk and park on it and block traffic, that's their decision, you know?
So what about the front sidewalk?
The what now?
The front sidewalk.
Why I fell. The curb is, I mean, it's obvious.
There's not a whole lot that you can do to that front sidewalk because of your porch and the supports there in the sidewalk.
But that can be filled in with something other than blacktop.
Well, they put, they put some blacktop filler in there to try to transition it.
And it wasn't even where I fell. Wasn't even necessary to put it where it was put.
Yeah. I can, I can tell them, they'll take some more down there, but it's not very, it's not very high. It's not high enough to stub your toe.
What are you asking for there? What do you want?
Want the sign removed?
Want the sign removed.
The curb comes up higher than the sidewalk. The sidewalk has settled.
One of those belongs to me.
See right in there. I actually had a lady that fell there, and she got a big old goose head. She was from out of town, so she didn't want to file a report. Somebody's going to get hurt. So, and right there, the sad part is, is you fall back into traffic. The day I fell, I fell into traffic. And it was Maggie Conway's wife and all the lady that worked at the board. I probably would have got ran out because it was right at eight o'clock in the morning. And I fell into the highway.
Where's that other picture of the aerial map visual of it?
She's got in there that I've got set back. So then.
Mary Bell, you're telling me that they own this property on that side of that parking lot?
According to the maps.
So where is this, where is this at on this side of it?
From?
On the front side. Do they own that too?
I didn't even look at the front side. We were talking about one side only.
I understand that.
It's all right. What she's talking about is, is the fact that she fell and broke her arm.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm, all I'm getting at is if they're saying they own this, why, why are we going to fix this side and not fix the other?
I don't think we're going to fix the side, but.
Well, she wants that side fixed where the blacktop was at. But my question is.
Is this ours?
Why, why, why is the owners wanting to fix that side of it? It doesn't make sense to me.
Put that in there. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because it used to be.
He'd be able to tell you that those lines are not exact, you know, those are not to go by.
Right. It's forcing everybody to have to use.
Really, the front has nothing to do with the problem we're here talking about here.
That was me wanting the front fixed.
Yeah. Which is reasonable.
I mean, I'll put asphalt, I mean, concrete in if I can. I just don't know because it's not my property. But I just have people tripping on that. And I don't want anybody hurt. That's my concern.
It's not very high. And once they put something in there, it'll chip, it'll come out pretty quickly, you know? We'll put something in there.
I don't want blacktop. No blacktop. That blacktop got tracked in my store, and it still gets tracked into the store because it's right in front of the door.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I'll come, I'll talk with Jason and we'll see if we can do something there on that to try to relieve you day to day.
Because I'm safe, trying to save you from a suit there because somebody's going to fall up there and they want to see you.
It's very interesting.
I'm sorry.
Concrete in there is going to get water in it, but.
Well, it's so thin that there's not, not any.
I know.
You almost have to chip it out and get some thicker.
Be railing or railing.
We'll try something.
No, because I won't put a step. Okay.
I ain't been in front of it in a while. But can we, I mean, can they put steps there? You don't come in after, after you put the concrete in. I do a little bit of concrete work myself too. And not us, but maybe we could find out on the concrete, on the steps coming down. So when you smooth that out, you have a step coming down to the street there. You see what I'm saying?
Uh-uh.
Parking is already a step.
It would be nice to have an ADA slope like the other side.
I think Tara and I would fix this.
Right here it is a step up here.
I think Tara and I will fix that. I'm, we will take care of the front of the store to get the sign removed. Or at least it's like she said, if you're going to put up an old parking sign, put it the way they're going to park.
Right. Right now, I won't even see.
That's why somebody come pulling in can see it.
They can't.
They can't when you.
It faces the street, doesn't it?
It shouldn't face the street. It should face the parking slot.
But people are coming in off the street.
If you're coming in.
Yeah, but they're looking at the back of the sign when they do.
That's why I have this circled here. That's the pole. When, when I pulled in, all I saw was the side of that pole, and that was it. You can't even see the sign. And that's what really aggravated it.
Well, the sign, I thought the sign faced, faced Main Street.
No, okay, there's the front of my Jeep. And the sign is facing Main Street. It should be facing my Jeep. And it's not.
You should read.
I know what you're saying, but.
You can't see that sign and read it correctly unless you're coming from Union. You couldn't pull up 231 and pull up there and even see that it says.
Which is the way you can.
I thought it was facing Main Street.
No. Well, it is down Main Street, but not.
We'll take a look at it and even remove it.
Can you just turn it around?
Well, that will be appreciated.
We need it removed. We have no parking.
Yes.
None.
And the thing of it is, when people break stuff to stores, sort of like me, I can't carry it from that parking lot there.
Yeah, I thought the sign was because of that, because I can't carry.
No.
No, sir.
Oh, sure. Okay.
You see where the truck?
Maybe we're off under.
George, I'll go down there with you tomorrow and look at that with Jason on the sidewalk side of it.
Do what now?
I'll go down there with you tomorrow and look at that concrete and stuff with Jason with you down there too.
Tommy is going to fix the concrete.
I've been down there enough time with concrete people and all. We've got estimates on fixing that sidewalk three or four times, you know, and stuff like that. It's, I know all about everything, the situation down there.
You can put this in the minutes if you would like. Dara? That's her husband's. Right. It's Tom Bennett's daughter. She told me they will fix the concrete on this side of the building. Period. So there's no need to worry about that because they will. They will fix it.
So the main thing you asked them for is the sign to be moved.
Yes. Yes. They're going to fix the, yes, last part there.
We'll just take it out.
There.
You're welcome.
People in the apartment, we really have a hard time because I live upstairs and the apartment's very blocked by the law.
Okay, we got all that settled. Okay. Alleyways.
So is that the decision that's being made that Tom will fix that sidewalk?
Yes.
And you're going to take the sign down?
Yeah. We'll take, we'll take the sign out.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The next alleyways. Tara has, I think, the diagram for this. I can describe it for you, but if you'd rather wait till the next time and look at what they're talking about. The deckers have come to me asking that some old alleyways be officially closed. Alleyways that are no longer being used, like, like so many that we've had here recently. They own property, about where the old slaughterhouse used to be. If you're not familiar with that, it's up in Phillips, comes down, Thomas, and which one is that? Smith Street?
Walker.
Smith Street.
Yeah. They own between there and the little street, I'm not even sure what it is. It goes upside, side Memorial Gardens. What's the name of that street?
Which one?
The one that goes up beside Memorial Gardens. Not Minton, but the other one. I can't think anyway. I think it's a continuation of Phillips Lane on that diagram. But anyway, in the middle of all this property, there's an alleyway that runs through the middle of their properties. Of course, it hadn't been used in 50 years, you know? And they also want to value Phillips up here where it ends at, we'll just postpone it. I'll show you the diagram. That's the simplest thing to do because she's got it at her place and chasing down some owners or whatever. You want to close what's not being used and just complete their property is what it does.
Is that that space, when you come down in front of the Habitat people and you go to the corner?
Yeah.
Is this the alleyway that they're wanting?
Phillips, well, Phillips comes down only to a point. I mean, that, as far as it comes down, is down to, that's not Smith Street. It's.
No, it's.
Trying to pitch you. I know what you're talking about. I was on it today. When we picked up trash up in there.
Yeah. I can't think of the streets. Smith Street runs back beside the park, okay? The next street over is the street that used to run up to the slaughterhouse.
Yeah.
And that's where Phillips actually right now ends. Phillips ends right there at that street, whatever it is.
That's right. Okay. All right.
Okay. There's on the, Phillips actually goes on farther, but it's been, this never has been paved or anything. Never has been completed. It actually goes all the way through their property. And so he's asking that the part that hasn't been closed from, from that street, whatever it is. I'll go in the office and look at the map and try to go up that street name. But Phillips ends right there where the slaughterhouse used to be.
Mm-hmm.
All right. He wants that officially closed from, from that street where it shows Phillips no longer, that no longer exists. He wants that officially closed, which since he owns both sides, it will become his property.
Right.
And then there's another street that runs, runs perpendicular to that, runs parallel to the one that I can't think.
Taylor Avenue?
No, it's not Taylor.
I'm totally confused right now, but if I'm not mistaken, we signed that alley over to that man that lives there in the corner.
Well, that's a continuation, the alley that was a continuation of the street. I can't think the name of it. It went straight up and down.
Thomas, Thomas Street. Is it Thomas?
Is it Thomas? Okay.
It goes right up to the slaughterhouse and none other.
Yep.
Is this?
Phillips comes across and ends at Thomas Street. What we closed was the alleyway that was the continuation of Thomas Street.
Right.
Okay. What he wants to close officially is the rest of Phillips that goes out this way that's no longer being used. In fact, I think the old slaughterhouse was built on that street. Here's Phillips. Here's where your houses are.
I know where you are.
And Thomas. All right. Phillips on the map comes on straight across, but it was never developed. It was never paved. It was never completed.
Is he willing to buy it from the city or what?
No, it's just, it's an alleyway that was not being used. He is asking that we close it.
Is it Porter Court?
He's got another alleyway over here down through the middle of his property. It's like the ones behind.
It's not Porter Court, is it?
Huh?
Is it Porter Court?
No. Well, the street over here is Porter Court. Yeah. The one that runs beside.
I know what you're talking about.
It's like any of these other alleys.
I know.
Okay, since it's not being used, he wants it officially declared closed. And then, since he owns property on both sides of it, then it was all becoming his property.
Well, then we would have to deed that property to him as we close that alley.
Right.
Is he willing to buy it? I mean, yeah, we just go give him land?
We've never sold it. It's like anytime we close a alleyway, half of it goes to one owner, another half goes to the other owner. We never get any remuneration for it. Never have.
When anybody buys, just drip that way. They want to benefit of it. I don't know.
We just, we just.
I just.
We just closed one that run, parallel to Clay Street.
Oh, yes. I'm well worth it.
Pardon?
I'm well worth it.
Okay. We, we closed half of it about a year or two ago for Ms. Dolby. We closed half of it because it was. We closed half of it because it was.
By the museum too, right? Is that another one?
Hmm.
By the museum?
No, this was over here between Smith Street and Thomas Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's parallel between, we closed half of it from Miss Doble because there was a tree growing in it. We were supposed to give half to her and half to Jerry.
Right.
Well, Jerry didn't want it, so all of that went to, went to her. Okay, then here recently, we just closed the other half of that alleyway request. There was trees growing up in the middle of it, that big around. Okay. So, it's just another case of somebody knowing there's a alleyway there that they don't own, the city owns it, city has no use for it. They wanted to know, we'll close it and deed it half to half. In his case, the whole thing would become his. And then there's another one that's similar to the ones we've been closing that were the alleyways for coal and ice trucks to deliver and stuff like that. It's another little alleyway that sits between Thomas and, well, this street here comes down this way. We'll just wait till next month and you'll see the diagram and you'll see. Inside then, okay? Okay, uh, the next issue that's on our agenda is, uh, ditch work. The Stratans that are here tonight, uh, live on, their address is Kirk Street, but they back up to Western Avenue. And, uh, Tony's neighbor. And the properties down Western Avenue have, over the years, had tiles put in, dirt. Covering them, grassed and, you know, they're just level with the street. Well, the Stratans still have a ditch and it's, uh. Hmm. I don't know how long it is. It runs all the way across their property. They've had problems with water. In a, in a big storm that would come up onto their backyard, their back property. What they're asking, uh, they asked the city to consider doing it. Well, we can't work on private property, uh, which is, their ditch is actually. Well, our, our policy has all, has been that we'll do, uh, some covert work. If people will buy the tiles, then we'll put it in and supply the dirt, cover it up. Uh, we did this for Mike Irwin over here. He had a ditch that we put in a tile there and covered it up, and now his yard comes all the way out to the street. And he puts up signs saying, "Don't drive in the yard," you know, or something. So anyway, uh, the tile, it's a thirty inch tile that comes onto their property. And on the other end, I think it's a thirty-six inch tile. Now, what we can, what we've, uh, can do is put in a tile, it'll have to have a couple of, uh, cleanouts. And the project is about eleven to twelve thousand dollars. And they're. We're. We're trying to see if you all are agreeable to them paying half and the city pay half on purchasing the tiles. Because the other work was done, um, and it may have done it, been done at the city's expense. We don't know, I don't know. I'm not familiar with it at all. But what they're asking is for the city to go in havers with them and put in the tile and cover it over and try to alleviate them from the flooding that takes place periodically.
Do we have a written policy on tiling or anything?
Nothing, nothing.
Just kind of like.
It's all, yeah, I don't know who started. I don't know which.
I think it's something that we need to have more in depth with to look at and see, because I know, if I'm not mistaken, Beverden don't do that anymore. I don't even think they put them in anymore. Um, I know the county still does, but I don't know that the cities do. Um, and I see the problem every day, because I live over that way too. Um, the only thing that I'm gonna say about this is if, if we done this for, for, for my neighbors here.
Right.
Which they're good people and I love them. But if we open this for that, that one. We're gonna have to might do that again for the next person and the next person and the next person.
The other thing that I would have to add, if I would, uh, about this is the fact that over, over the years, as I understand it, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows. From years in the past, before you all had anything to do with it, it's, it's a city thing. Because of some of the mistakes they made with other previous tiles put in that's too small, it's causing us to have to get too, much larger, more expensive materials. Because of the city's past mistakes. Do you see what I'm saying?
That's what we're asking for. Has the city ever put in any of those tiles?
I had been told that they had.
Well, I know that the property, I don't even know who owns Ronnie Dorcas' property.
I do.
I do, I do. You did, okay. He put that in, but he consulted with the city employees to ask them what kind of tile he needed to get and put it in there.
I spoke with his wife about it. She made a comment, just a, just a very short, brief comment. She said, because I was talking about getting our ditches done way back when, when she got those done, and I was asking her about it. I said, "How'd you get that done?" She said, she said, "It took me twenty years to get the city to do this," and she just walked away. That's what she told me directly.
Now, as far as the tiles. Um. The situation is, there's one main tile and there's three smaller ones. One of the smaller ones is clear across the street, going under the street. So I don't think a private citizen put that in there. The city had put it in there. So instead of doing it correctly and tying it into the tile, they just ran it to the side of it. And doing so, it makes it difficult to encompass all four tiles into one. Now, I did some research with a gentleman over there at, um.
Southern States?
Southern States.
Stores.
And, uh, he said he can get us a tile to fit into the tiles that are already there. He said, instead of taking out, I've got two tiles, since my property goes this way, there's two driveways and there's two tiles there. Instead of removing those, he can insert a tile through those and connect it up there.
And that's with cleanouts?
But it's not big enough, Paul.
I understand that. That's what, uh, when Mr. George came out there and looked at it, that's what he said, it's not big enough, because that would cause a backup to further up. And my, my counter to that is, well, it's flooding my yard. So why is it they're so special that they don't get flooded, but over the, as of November this year, twenty-five years, it's been flooding my yard? And I've been told that since the bank put the tile up above, well, below us, that it's constricted, it's now even worse now, since they did theirs. So, the city didn't do it right, allowing the bank to put a bigger tile in, therefore constricting it even further onto mine. And the city did wrong by having three tiles separate, instead of tying it into one, to make it even more difficult. So where I got an estimate of four thousand dollars, which I was gonna pay for, and as long as the city's gonna install it and cover it up. When, uh, Jason came down, looked at it, now he said it's eleven to twelve thousand. And Mr. George said that we've, we agreed to pay in half. I can't pay six thousand dollars. I can't. Now, the situation is, there's a street right across the road from us. If anybody misses that curb, they're in my ditch. And throughout the years, I have found children playing in the ditch. And there's broken glass somewhere. I'm sorry.
That's what ditches are for.
But with broken glass and trash and everything else in there. And plus, it's a mosquito fest. So there's hell, uh, situations with a pool of mosquitoes there. So we've been asking the city to take care of this and they've given us some, uh, bait traps or mosquitoes to kill it, just dump it in there. But after one rain, it's all gone. We have to keep redoing it.
But the ditch is stopped up right now, Paul?
The ditch is stopped up right now. We have a tree limb that we've asked the city to help us out that has fallen onto the street, which was my, our fear. Luckily, nobody was walking on it. A car got hit by it. And the city, and I didn't know it until, um, uh, Dixie came home and said there was a limb out there, but the city came in there, cut it, and it's, it's in the ditch, clogged up. Normally, I would go out there and mow it, but this year I said, "I'm done with it. I'm tired of mowing it." And, and what you said is, we can't put it on private property. We can't do it. Well, I understand that, but the city has allowed other tiles on private property to dump water into my private property. So if they can funnel other places in the city into my ditch, making my flooding worse, if the city can do that, then the city can fix it. Now, there is a easement. I'm thinking the ditch part, at least some of it, is on the city, so therefore the city could help that as well. So there's like three mistakes the city has done. And I'm not pointing at any fingers on here, because this is way before you all, everybody's been on council. So when I say city, I'm not directing at any individual here, so please do not take offense to it. I'm talking about the organization of the city decades ago, because this was done in place when we bought the place in ninety-seven. So that's the situation, and according to Mrs. George, the city did that as well, so that's, that's my piece.
Discussion. Before the bank was built down there, in the spring, we'd get these big rains. Where the water would get up to the trees in my front yard. So when they built the bank, they put a tile down there. Water would get under the house if you ain't careful. There were out there. And a lot of the water that gets in Paul's backyard comes down behind my house, down by the fence, goes to his backyard.
I know when it rains really hard, it'll flood my garage out. Like, that whole backyard from mine and Miss Raymond's place, just all that back in that area just floods to no end.
If the rain stops, then, then ain't no time, the water's gone. Last year, it got up under my house. And I just don't feel like there's big enough tile down there by the bank.
And that brings up another liability issue. If, if the city has routed, uh, tiles into the ditch and not doing their property, and it's causing flooding. The liability damage to properties and homes themselves, who does that fall on? Since the city has routed these tiles into a ditch and not done it properly.
Any kind of liability issue, we just have to take up with our attorney and let her.
Can we table this discussion for legal counsel?
We can.
I think we should.
Well, in addition to that, and I wanna help anybody out that we can, but if, if there is a precedent set on paying for others and what's needed to pay for, she'd be the one to answer that.
But I don't know if there has been. See, I don't, I'm not familiar with any kind of records or anything like that.
So what is, uh, what is the center mass of the road from that ditch line? Does anybody know that?
Yeah, it's twenty-five feet, I think.
Okay, so what is that measure from that ditch?
His, the tree he's talking about is on their property. That's one reason the city couldn't tackle it, because it's not our, it's not our tree.
Well, would that be according to the base of the tree, the trunk of the tree, or the root system, which the root system. Uh, the road, therefore it's still a city issue, because it's still.
Now, that, that doesn't figure into it.
Yeah.
It's the location of where that tree comes out of.
But it goes right over to the base of his tree, so the, the ditch is actually in the right way of the city.
So it is.
Yeah.
The one that we done over here, what was that?
What, which ditch?
It says name Mike, is that right?
Oh, Mike Irwin, yeah.
What, what was that one?
Um.
Was it?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what grid the streets is. I can look it up. It's, I've got it in there, but, uh.
Anything to fix our water system, water.
Right.
Close, if it's on the city, I think we'd be okay on that.
Yeah.
However, if we're not, we can't pay for anything like that at all, in my opinion. And I know that to be probably the gospel of it, but if it's on us, I. Paul, let's, let us talk to Tara and them at the next meeting, just to make sure, and I don't have a problem going forward with it. Um, but we need to make sure that we are in the rights of what we're doing before we do it.
Well, I understand the situation of, uh, doing one and having to do many. I understand that.
Because we just can't get into that, um, just, just.
Like it's a can of worms.
Yes, it, it'd be one person, so we just need to make sure we got it in depth before we go forward on it.
I, I, I didn't expect a decision to be made tonight.
So, um.
I would like it. I, I know things have to be looked at.
Yeah, but we'll, uh, we'll look at it and George will talk to Tara and see what we have, but this is a thing that I think we need to have set in stone on policies. On, uh, what we can and cannot do, uh, on tile work, um.
It's just my point was, I, the only caveat to this is if the city did it proper in the first place.
Right.
It wouldn't have been this bad. So I'm, I'm just asking the city to correct their mistake.
Well, they were going to replace the expensive, larger.
Well, there was no cleaning zone. And let me tell you something, I grew up down there, far from there. There has been flooding ever since I was a little girl and I'm going on, pretty old.
That's why we're asking for help on it, because of the much more expensive, larger.
Well, what, what I'm saying though, depending on how much it costs and how extensive it may be, you may be asking.
It floods every time.
Paying it, I'm in here to see if it's being declared. And you don't want it, because, no, because the insurance on that.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's expensive. They weren't coming to declare an area that's it, that asking. Houses. Your insurance.
I had to my yard.
Go up.
It's, it's already expensive, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I've got one other issue for our new business tonight. Um, we've got a lift station that's off of Oakwood Drive, um. Backwards, it's backwards Sandy, um. What was Sandy's last name? They live.
Yeah.
That, that, that street that goes by, besides your house, that out, that lane goes back there. There's a lift station back there.
Okay.
And, uh, it actually just services them. But, um, it's, it's burned up and it's burned up because people are still putting flushable wipes in the. In the system. It clogs up the pump, the pump burns up, and then we've gotta replace it. Well, we can get a pump to put in there, a grinder pump that will take care of those. And it's, uh, it's gonna be four thousand five hundred and seven dollars how we get it put in there.
How much for what?
Pardon?
How much?
Four thousand five hundred and seven dollars, four five zero seven. And I'm just, uh, requesting that purchase, um.
What will that be taken out of?
Uh. Does it come out of the sewer account?
Well, I mean, ultimately.
Yeah, ultimately it has to come out of there, but we can, we can use, um, we can use occupational tax because it's infrastructure, you know.
How, how, you said it's continually had problems? It's burned up before or been replaced?
Well. Well, it happens all over town. It's not just there. It's, it's an ongoing issue everywhere. Grease is another big issue. You know, we've had problems with, uh, we had to go to the hospital and have them clean out their grease trap and rest home the same way. And Bob's DA's got the same issue, you know. They just have to keep their traps clean, but the grease gets in there and it comes to this.
Hits that water.
A big, a waggled mess.
Plus everything else that's there.
Pardon?
Everything else that goes in there.
Yeah, you'd be surprised what they've dug out. Blankets, mop heads, you know. This is stuff that's supposed to go through a commode, you know, and I don't know how somebody gets a blanket through a commode.
I don't remember.
But we've had that. We've had, like I said, the grease is one of the biggest problems. We had to put acid in there, degreaser. So anyway, we've got riverbeds stopped from using wipes. We used to have an ongoing problem down there. There were so many different apartments and it looked like everybody was using those flushable wipes, but, but, um... They make pumps, but you've got to go to a bigger pump that's designed differently to handle that kind of stuff. And we, we've tried to get by without having to go that route, you know, smaller. And for most areas, it'll work, you know, little small areas. You don't get the huge, big influx of these flushables. But anyway, this is one place where we just have ongoing problems, so.
I make the motion that we move on getting that grinder. And I guess the funds be taken out of occupational tax account.
Okay. Green discussion to it. All in favor? A lifted hand? Thank you. Motion's carried. Uh, I've got one informational, just a reminder. The ad for the water tank project was in this week's paper. And the, uh, we'll have a pre-bid meeting with all the, by, all the bidders. But the actual bid opening will be July 13th here. I think it'll be, he mentioned having it down at the water plant. So I, I told him we can have it here, probably a little better. But anyway, just a reminder, July 13th is the bid opening for that project. Okay, that's all I've got. Somebody else got anything you want to bring up?
Um, I have something. I don't even know if it, it wouldn't be voteable or nothing, but it, it caught my attention. I know that we paid for the Oakwood Drive cemetery to be mowed and they do a really good job. An individual on their crew the other day had a really foul shirt on. I mean, it.
Okay.
F you on it. And he's representing the city. So, I mean, I don't.
Representing?
Well, they're represent, if we hire them.
I think they, everybody thinks they are.
No, but you know what I mean. If we're hiring them, it's a representation of the city. And I know it may be petty this time, but.
I'll say something next time we hand him the check.
Okay. And I don't know who owns the business. There was one on the crew. I don't.
Uh, we just have the best luck with him, you know. He's very.
That's good work. I'm not complaining about the work.
I mean, they'll be out there in the rain once they're dating them all and they'll, they'll still do a good job, so.
If we've hired someone, they should be.
We've got a lot of compliments. We've had people say, they don't even live here, that have said, "We want to buy some blossom and be buried here because we say I can take care of the cemetery," so.
I notice going up through the Oakwood Drive Cemetery side, that big steep bank there. It just trimmed perfect.
Yeah.
On the other side where the park is, it's grown up a foot and a half high.
I'll tell Jason.
He mowed it two months ago.
Yeah.
We need to hire them for the park too. Just change his shirt. He does, they do wonderful work. I just, if it's a representation of the people we're paying, it doesn't look good. I don't think.
We'll take care of it.
Since, uh, here's, here's something. Wondered if you all could put that up on the front window, maybe one where people drive through, that that's coming up in September.
Okay. Be glad to. Here, put it on the front door too. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something before we dismiss.
Okay.
I want to say to the council members, the staff, the clerks, and want you to know that yesterday, the mayor, the council member, Jason, uh, Bo, they jumped out there on the trash trucks. If not, the trash would have been really backed up and behind. And I want to recommend them for what they done.
Don't recommend me.
Because they done a fine job.
Well, you did. You helped today too.
I'm used to doing that out of work.
And I had heard that. Thank you all very much. What's, are we shorthanded? Are people sick?
We're shorthanded. We've, we've had one that quit about a week or two ago. And then we've got another one that's having problems with the heat. Anyway, it makes us a bit shorthanded. I've hired another one today.
Okay.
And I've got another one that you gave me, I haven't followed up with him, you know, about.
Yeah, Mayor, kudos to you. And I didn't do it very long. Kudos to both of you. I mean, I try to give this man a break, but listen, he's a, he's a working horse, so.
I paid for it too last night.
Wait till he got home.
Yeah. My leg's got cramp.
One thing that I do have before we adjourn. The judges approached me about this building back here.
That one?
This building back here, yeah.
Little fire station.
What it is, is the coroner's office is getting a new cooling system and wanting to see if we can have access for that office. I'm putting my county hat on now. Uh, wanting to have access to that office in that bay right there in that point. They got a cooler coming tomorrow and they need somewhere to plug it in.
Now, which bay is it that they?
It's the bay, they're in the last one on the end. They're wanting.
Oh, the one next to the office?
Yes.
Okay, the one next to the office.
In that bay right there, yeah.
Okay, what about behind there? There's a little garage type thing. They need that too. I mean, of course, it's open, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, we're just, okay.
So, um, if we get it cleaned.
They gonna leave us with the two middle ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So if we can just get that moved to that direction, that's all they're asking.
Yeah, I don't know where we'll put stuff, but maybe we'll scoot it over to a little bay or something.
Is there any motion or anything or just conversation?
Conversation.
It's coming tomorrow?
The cooler is, but I think we can work around that if they just have it opened up enough where they can put that and plug it on. That cooler just needs to be plugged in when they get, when it gets here. Basically, whenever somebody comes and they have to identify a body, they're going to have a room where you can walk through and just make it more uniformed instead of a bay that they're looking.
So they're, they're wanting to make it permanent?
Yes.
We talked about that anyway.
How much stuff does the city get stored up there?
Well...
It's not, I went up there the other day. It's, it's a couple truckloads. They have been working on it here and there and it looks better than it has in a little, little while.
They, they own the building. They own the building. We, we don't own it, you know. So we, we must have to be thankful that they leave us for two days.
It would be nice if us let them use our building, you wouldn't?
It would.
Yeah.
That's why they don't mind waiting till the day before.
I think we, it's on our insurance policy, isn't it? We, we insure the building, but of course.
Well, then we need, I'll, I'll bring that to.
We're using free force of it.
I'll bring that to their attention too, I mean, so. That's all I got. I make the motion. We adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.